Okay with this order of business, I'll start with you Kathy Bates.
Here and yes.
Mark Terry.
Here and yes.
Paul Kendall.
Here and yes.
Aaron Williams.
Chief Assistant.
And yes.
Excellent. Okay Jim, first actually I'll see if there's anybody here who wants to give public comment. I do see a couple of guests. And is there anybody who would like to say anything before we get started with the rest of our agenda? This is the time. Okay, seeing none, I will turn it over to you now Jim, thank you.
Great, thank you. To say it's been an eventful week would be one of the most grossly understated comments of the year. But here we are on the 4th of December. And I just want to mention again, as I do every one of these meetings, thank you to Ed, Audrey and the staff for all the hard work and time and effort that they're putting into this every single week. No one knows how much time they're putting in. That includes me who's with them, talking to them a lot. So, thank you. That being said, as you know, just a highlight of the week, at the beginning of the week, we on Tuesday made a decision due to a number of factors at the high school with some community members testing positive, with the need to quarantine approximately 20 community members as well, in addition to about 20 folks who traveled waiting for their test results. We felt it was in the best interest of the school district to move the high school into remote while, remote learning through next Friday while we await test results and some of those test results are starting to filter in Ed, if that's correct, this morning. When I show you the data, it's as of this morning at 7 o'clock. And I can tell you that some of those, you know, I will say I'm glad that we quarantined, I'll put it that way. And I'm glad that we went into remote learning because of the results that are potentially coming through right now. And then obviously Pittaway went into remote only for two weeks and that was a staffing issue. We did not have and would not be able to conduct classes due to the number of staff available because of COVID and quarantining as well. So that was the decision at Pittaway. With regard to the other three schools, again, I think it's important that we make decisions based on the data in front of us, which we are doing. And the other three schools were able to continue this week and I'm glad that that's why we look at the data daily. It was certainly clearly isolated to specific buildings. And yes, we do consider brothers and sisters and you know, husbands and wives and partners in all of the decision making. So we're looking at people within the same community and buildings and living arrangements before we make those decisions. So I've had people ask me that question, well, what do you have, what if there are siblings and it's a kid? And I said, well, we take that into consideration. That's what we do. That's, we go through the whole process. That's what contact tracing does. So again, thank you to the people who are doing all that work. That being said, I do want to emphasize I'm concerned about our future with regard to staffing more than anything. And you know, the more staff is out because of quarantining and because of close contacts with a potential, not necessarily our staff having COVID, but because they're in contact with folks who have COVID. And they become a close contact, now they have to quarantine. And the more that occurs, the less folks we have to actually perform our job of educating kids. And that is what we're seeing across the Commonwealth more than anything is that a lot of our adult members of the community are becoming infected and someone becomes a close contact and now that we don't have enough substitute teachers to come into the buildings to actually work. And so that is what's forcing a lot of closures around the state. In addition to a number of clusters of kids, but I'm just stating the point that if we have to move to remote in other buildings, it's most likely going to be due to personnel issues versus the actual spread within a community, our community or schools. So I'll stop there before I share that any of the data if you have questions.
No, no questions, but I just want to echo your comments and we'd be totally shut down and remote. We'd be that way for the last several weeks if it wasn't for the work that the COVID Task Force has done with contact tracing. If we don't have those answers, we would have to be remote. So the fact that my kids can go into school, you know, is largely and almost solely due to the work that they're doing with contact tracing. So thank you very much for all that.
Thanks Paul. I guess the last overarching piece is next Thursday, I've arranged for, and I have a meeting this morning after this meeting, as my admin team is, will be there as well. We will be offering COVID testing for all faculty and staff next Thursday across the entire district. And through a donation, a company called Concentric. And so, but there's a lot of logistics that I need to work out today with our staff to make this work. And I'm looking forward to, it's a baseline, it's a saliva-based PCR test. But there's a lot of work that I've got to get done today to get this up and running for all staff to be able to participate. But it's exciting to me that we at least can offer this, you know, to create a baseline. It's voluntary, 100% voluntary. When Medway did this, they were, about 50% of their staff participated. I hope more than 50% of our staff participates to at least give it that baseline for someone. And it might help identify asymptomatic carriers within our building. I think that's always the concern is COVID could be in our buildings and more than likely is, right? Because some folks are asymptomatic and that's the, that's what this test will help us at least hopefully identify some folks. So I will share now.
Yep, okay.
The data, the data as of 7:00 AM this morning, Ed and I have made an executive decision that you will not get these on Thursday night because what we want to be able to do is share that obviously the state is not sending out their data until Thursday at 5:00 PM. And they're still lagging behind, remember. Their data is through, I think, the 1st of December. And maybe the 30th of November. Our data is accurate as of 7:00 AM this morning. And it takes into account the incident rate for the week, right? So that's what, I want to be clear. We're giving you real-time data as of this morning. And what we were giving you before was still a cutoff data, but in previous meetings Ed had said, hey, by the way, we had this come in this morning overnight. Or this came in late yesterday after I gave you the data. So we wanted to at least try to give you the most update, updated current information that we have. Does that sound reasonable to folks? It just takes a little, okay, just takes a little more, you know, quick finger trigger by Ed in the morning at 7:00 and me to get the data input, so. So here's the data as of this morning. Can everyone see that? Okay? Yes, no?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. As you'll notice, we've had 33 cases this week. Over the 14-day period, 69 cases. Our cases per 100,000 is just about similar to last week, 25.02. You'll notice one thing that changed. See this adjusted number of 19,700? It was 19,293 in the past. The Department of Public Health, was it Monday Ed, changed their guidelines in terms of population and what they were using for, to determine the per 100,000. So I've had to adjust that number. They've increased ours by 400 community members. And that was based on, I think now a 2019 census. So cases per 100,000, 25.02, similar to last week. The state has us at 34. Again, that's because if we're looking at the data, the state is including these cases here from the 30th down or the first down. Ours is accurate for the week. We have a 4.48% positivity rate. And I apologize, I forgot to put the state in. The Massachusetts positivity rate for the week was, and they do a seven day, is 3.7 instead of 3.32. So there's an increase in the state positivity rate as well. You'll notice that we have 48 students, this was as of yesterday, in quarantine and 12 teachers in quarantine. These numbers will most certainly change this morning. The 46 individuals in our community that have tested positive, 29 were asymptomatic and 17 were symptomatic. We're certainly, you know, creeping up towards, last week it was a little closer to the 50/50 range, but what we're seeing a lot of is transmission from parents to students. And you know, that's certainly a concern and I can't emphasize enough and I don't know how many folks are going to watch this, but I want to reiterate that we need support from our community in order to stay open. And by that, I mean if a parent is not feeling well and they're going to get tested, they need to keep their children home. They need to stay home until they get the test results back. Because what's happening and we've seen this happen is someone may test, you know, go for a test, they're not feeling well. They send students to school. And then they get their test back positive and now we've got to quarantine. We want you to quarantine before this occurs, before the incident occurs. If your child is not well, keep them home, err on the side of caution. If, again, if you're going to get tested, stay home until you get the results back. And we can't emphasize that enough and I think Audrey and Ed will concur on that statement. And that's what we're saying in the gatherings and in groups and we get and I get and understand the need to socialize. But we are certainly in a perilous situation where the district may have to move to a fully remote in all buildings if this continues. So any questions on this before I get off my soapbox? I apologize. It's a trend for sure, right? Even though it says we're down three cases, it's still, we're averaging about 30 plus cases a week.
Jim, do we have the ability with policy, very much like our travel policy that we just passed, do we have the ability to write something about if you're, like if you are tested that your children in the same home can't come to school? If we have a travel policy.
Yeah, I would defer to our attorneys on that and I can certainly reach out to our legal counsel and to see if that's a measure that we can take, Aaron.
Cause that seems like our next step.
Yeah.
Sorry, Aaron, what was the question? If somebody tests positive?
No.
If they're getting tested and they're waiting for the results that their children can't be in school, the same way that they can't be in school for X number of days, like with the new travel policy that you helped write, Paul. Like what could we do similarly for someone in the home being tested?
So the problem, Aaron, too, is we don't, we don't know if the family's going to get tested, right?
We will eventually though.
Well, right, when we get the results. And that is what Audrey and Ed would tell you is we've had situations where when we start, when the information comes in and someone has tested positive, now it's like, okay, let's figure out, and there's a story, right? There's always a story and that's what Audrey, she's always in my office saying, I just want to figure, understand this story. I want to understand how this occurred. And so when we dig more deeply into it, it's the, it's the, well, why did you send your kid to school? And you, they don't have to tell us they're being tested as an adult, as a parent, right? So they just send their kid. And so we may never know until we get the results. So that's the challenge there too. There's a level of, of ownership, I think, that we must take as community members. And policy, I don't think will change that. I just, I can't emphasize enough the importance of being a responsible community member in all of this.
I think Jim setting the expectation is essentially as effective or more effective than a policy in this case, right? This is what our expectation is. Because there's not a procedure to follow. A policy and you have to implement a procedure around it, right?
Right.
I want access.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, again, I'm willing to certainly reach out to our council and ask if they think it's even appropriate or we can do that, so.
Yeah, cause I mean, I feel like we're already stepping into that same realm, asking if people have traveled. Like if you've traveled and if you've been tested are two very, very similar questions.
Well, we.
I think this is my concern about the travel policy not having, I guess, teeth or consequence, right?
Yeah.
And how do we help guide the right behaviors?
But we certainly had folks who didn't follow the travel policy, so.
And folks that were completely aware of the travel policy and not following it.
Yep.
So.
All right, just one point, I think there is a little bit of a difference potentially in that the travel policy is based on the governor's travel order, right? There is a state issued order that says, you know, you have to quarantine if you're going to do this. And I think what we'd be reaching out to here, or reaching out to developing our own independent thing that says, excuse me, whatever we wanted to say, you know, I mean, it could be, if there's anybody symptomatic, you need to stay home for 30 days, right? We're making it up on our own and
Right.
I certainly appreciate what you're aiming for with it. It's been something I've been struggling with too, which is I need to actually put some effort into this whole thing and and take control of it because it's not fair to the people who are doing what they should. The people who aren't are kind of ruining it for everybody. But I don't have an answer to it.
I think also like not everybody who gets tested is getting tested because they were exposed or because they're symptomatic. Like my daughter gets tested for work, for instance, you know, twice a week because she works in healthcare. So, I mean, if, let's say she were a parent and that was her situation, her kids would never be able to come to school because she's being tested as a matter of course, not because there's an issue that we're aware of. You know what I'm saying? So that could impact people that are just getting tested for reasons of, you know, requirements for work or some other reasons that don't necessarily, it just seems like it would be hard to manage. I hear what you're saying, Aaron, because when you find out that somebody did come to school after they'd been tested, which might mean that they had a suspicion. And then you've lost a couple of days where you could have prevented some exposure, but I don't know how you manage it.
Yeah, and I guess I'm saying this all in light of like what, what Rob Tremblay's saying is happening in Framingham. Like I know we're not seeing it here in Ashland, but they are starting to see in school transmission in Framingham. And I think it's a matter of time potentially for us. I mean, I hope not, but if we keep having this type of behavior, it's only more likely.
Yeah, I hear you. It's really hard to stay on top of all of it. Sure, just add, ask and Audrey.
Yeah, okay, so, so again, right now we're still moving forward with the same plan for next week. The high school is in remote. And Pittaway is in remote and the other three schools are hybrid. Nothing has changed. Again, any of the data that we're still seeing is still relative or relevant to those, to the high school, so.
Jim, just on that, you mentioned before that you're glad that we went to this model this week and the numbers are bearing that out. Can you just put a little bit more meat on those bones and tell us sort of what, what we're seeing for positive rates from people who were close contacts in those scenarios?
Well, we can't yet, Mark, because those, those numbers are just coming in.
Okay.
This morning was the first, I think the first one, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong. I think it was the first. We're starting to get those numbers now. Yeah, yeah. That's why part of it, Mark, and, and so we're 100% right now.
Okay.
But that, but that being said, we have to, you know, that's why part of it was closing down because we knew we'd be getting the results over the weekend as well.
Right.
And impacting next week, so, yeah.
So does that positive case expand the circle of close contacts that we looked at now?
Audrey and Ed will have to answer that one.
Audrey, you, you going or?
The answer is.
What was the?
So the. The question was if we had a positive result this morning from, I'm assuming it was somebody, one of our students, does that now expand the circle of close contacts, you have to evaluate them based on that person when other people before were contacts of contacts rather than a close contact?
Right, so each time a new case comes in, the first thing we, Audrey and I do is we figure out what cohort they're in. Just so that way, that's how we know if we have even a few minutes, you know, to, you know, to get our bearings on it. Or is that kid now in school that we've got to remove from the classroom? Because now they're a close contact or something. So that's, that's the first place we start. Yeah. Each new case starts a whole new group of contact tracing.
So the, so if you're in quarantine and you become positive, Mark, now your new close contacts are, say, people in your household. Right? Yeah, so, so it does. It starts to, it begins to spider web out, if you will, and that's what is the concern.
So at this point, we don't have a sense of whether this one positive case, it sounds like it's one out of one or two out of two, but whatever that number is, whether that's going to force us to give us a longer closure while you sort all that out either, right?
Right, right. So that's why, I mean, I think we just need to be understanding as a community, a decision, I mean, if, if things happen throughout the weekend and the data bears and bears it out that we have to close other schools, then we have to be able to do that. And and that might occur and it might happen and we can't, that's why I think it's important, the way we've approached it is really in a in a thoughtful manner as we look at the day, today data. Whereas other districts are just waiting for the weekly information. I don't, I feel it's important that we, we do this daily and that's a lot of work for Ed and Audrey and the COVID team and our administrative team on the weekends making calls and, but that's what we've committed to doing, so, to stay open. One other thing, I don't know if you want to say anything Lisa Bowden now, or if you want to wait till Wednesday or Tuesday's meeting to talk a little bit about how things are going with regard to nutrition services and meals before we get into Stephen and the meat of today's meeting.
I guess I'll just speak that, you know, for everybody's benefit, I'd reach out to Jim just saying, you know, we've had this food services program going on for months now. And I was curious as to what the participation rate is. I, that to me, Jim, could have been a part of the way I was thinking about it, it's just part of your normal
Okay.
updated or regular meeting. I would say I would just make a real quick request on if I could is, I know somebody posted something on the town Facebook page about the impact to people who struggle with food security.
Yep.
And so if, I don't know, but I assume that we were continuing our support for families who need food and students need food while we're in this period of remote learning at the high school.
That's correct.
Okay, but that's all I was looking to confirm. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so I'll have Lisa then present on Tuesday at our normal meeting, so. So I'm going to turn this over to Stephen. As you know, I'll just give the highlight before he begins and I I don't know how long we want to spend on it today. We've also scheduled some conversation for Tuesday's meeting. As you know, winter sports through the MIA are due to begin on December 14th. Stephen will give a presentation as to the work that he has been doing with the Tri Valley League. Athletic directors and principals have met as well. I have been in contact with the superintendents of the TVL and this is happening pretty much on a daily basis. As we are all as superintendents working with, I would say everyone's going through their school committee, but a lot of us are having these conversations with our school committees to determine what is the best course of action. You know, we had a very successful fall for athletics and not only in terms of how our students competed, but their behavior. No COVID cases, the, the rules and regulations that the TVL athletic directors put into place were excellent in keeping our kids safe. It added a lot of benefit to our physical exercise, mental wellbeing. There were a lot of positives. Now we come to the winter months and we've got a few winter sports that, that are being offered. And clearly there will be concern with regard to being indoors, potential of more close contact. You know, we've seen the news stories about hockey outbreaks and again, I want to be very clear that club hockey and youth hockey have very different standards than MIAA and TVL. And that we are way more cautious and we are way more thoughtful with regard to our rules and regulations than, than youth hockey. Nothing against my youth hockey friends, but that's the truth. And you know, we have the ability to be a little more strict in how we approach things. I'm not going to sit here today, this morning, on December 4th and give you Jim Adams's superintendent opinion yet as to what we should do because I will be honest, I am still trying to wrap my head around it. And to do what's right for kids is always been my mantra and, and to make sure that if we're keeping everyone healthy and safe, then that's what we're going to do. And that would be my recommendation, but I'm not there yet, to be honest with you. And Stephen and I had a nice long conversation yesterday. And I'm still concerned and I still have to be convinced that we can do this in a safe manner for our kids and our, in our community. That being said, we've made the commitment, if we're a remote district, we're not having athletics because we believe that there's COVID in our schools and that that's the reason why we're shutting down, right? So so that's where we are. So I will turn it over to Stephen and like I asked him last night to just give a highlight and overview of where things are currently and with regard to athletics and, and we'll go from there. Stephen, do you have the, do you want to, I'll give you permission, you can share your screen and then you can.
That would be great.
Okay, then you can move it along how you want. Okay?
Well, I don't need to give much of an opening statement because Jim pretty much said it for me, but the one thing I will add is I'm glad we're having these conversations and I'm glad it's not just an easy yes or no. I think if that were the case, we'd have a bigger problem. So I'm, I'm, I wouldn't say excited, but I'm glad that we're having these conversations to see what we're going to do that's best for, for our community here. So I am going to share my screen here in a second to give you the overview of where we are currently. So let's see if I can. Do you guys, no, do you see a presentation there?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, there we go. So again, this is just, just my overview. I have a much more in-depth plan to present on Tuesday evening, but I'll go through what we're, where we are as of now. So first, the important dates and you know, this, winter athletics has been in our, on our agenda for a number of weeks and we've been really just waiting for data from the, information from the state so that then our league and communities can start to put together that plan. So you know, the important dates to think about today. On November 11th, the EEA released their second update on sport guidelines. On the 20th, the MIA Board of Directors approved the COVID Task Force recommendations. So between the 11th and the 20th, individual sport committees were meeting and had to pass their modifications through a sports medicine committee before it went to the Board of Directors, if that makes sense. So there was a kind of a chain that they had to go through there. The MIAA has set December 14th as the first day of the winter season. Prior to that, it was set at November 30th, so they moved it back two weeks. And the MIA has set the end date to stay at February 21st.
Stephen, is this a little bit updated from what you sent us last night? It looks different.
This is a different presentation, Paul. Yeah, this is just the overview. The one on Tuesday will be much more in detail.
Okay, so the way you sent us last night was not for today, it's for Tuesday?
Yeah, all this information's in that one, but this is, unless you want me to talk for an hour or so today.
No, 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 I just, I just noticed it was different, so.
Yep. So what the MIA approved for the winter, they approved basketball. for the winner, they approved basketball, which from the EA is a high risk sport. They approved ice hockey, which is also a high risk sport. Gymnastics, which is a low risk sport, Alpine ski, which is a low risk sport, and swim and dive, which is a moderate risk sport. The reason that I'm putting the the risk level in there is if you read the EA guidelines, the reason that those sports got passed to the sports medicine committee and ultimately by the Board of Directors is if the modifications were made that they were comfortable with, you could compete in a high risk sport. So indoor track was moved to the fall two season and a lot of that was facility driven. Wrestling, which is also a high risk sport, has been moved to the spring season. And cheer has been moved to to be determined and that's mostly because cheer is not an official MIAA sport, but they're going to try and do something, I believe, in the spring season. So the Tri Valley Winter League Plan, so if you remember in the fall, we did two different pods based on geographical location. But for the winter season, we are going to go back to the TVL large and TVL small division. We found that the the travel on the the buses to and from didn't really make a difference here or there. It was what, you know, what safety precautions we were all putting in place. So we decided we would go back to the large and small divisions. In Ashland, what we will offer will be basketball, ice hockey, Alpine ski, and indoor track. However, we'll talk about indoor track in a minute. We'll do a 10 game schedule against our division. So there's six teams in the TVL large, so we'd have you know, five games or two games against the other five schools in the division. The other change from the fall, games were on the weekends. We did Saturdays and Sunday games and practices during the week. During the winter season, just based on the the sports that are being offered, it's more challenging to play back to back. But we're going to go basketball games will be traditionally Tuesday and Friday, ice hockey games, Wednesday and Saturday, and that's where they've been in the past. Our season will start on the 14th and but we are planning on ending on February 13th, so before vacation, that's when the the TVL. That first set of games wouldn't be until the first week of January, so the week of January 4th. So if we started on the 14th, we would have tryouts, some practices, come back after New Year's, have a practice or so, and then start our games. The entire season would be a six week schedule. We have five weeks of scheduled games, two games a week, that gets us 10 and one week at the end for makeups. Do you remember, we had to use our makeup week in the in the fall as well. Practices, we, in the fall, we had a three day a week practice plan, so three days during the week practicing and two days a week, two games on the weekend. In our athletic director's meeting yesterday, it was decided that, you know, we would follow the MIAA practice limitations. So what that is, is you can practice any day of the week as long as there's one day off per week. Doesn't mean that Ashland has to do that. And there was a lot of conversation within the the TVL of some schools wanted to do that and some schools said, you know, we're going to stick with just three days a week for practice. So we can talk about that as we get there. So what exactly we're going to offer? Like I said, basketball, ice hockey, ice hockey is played at Loring Arena. Girls' ice hockey is a co-op with Medway, Holliston and Millis, as Medway is the host. For data, we have six Ashland athletes and five families. There was one set of sisters on the on the team that have signed up to play. Alpine ski, we host, that's a co-op with Medfield. Medfield currently only has two athletes signed up for that. Gymnastics is a co-op again with Medfield, as Medfield is the host, and currently we have one athlete signed up for that. Again, I said we would practice either three or four days a week. The changes that we're making here in Ashland, swim and dive, which was approved for the winter season, I have moved to the fall two season and that's because we use Keith Tech as our home pool and it's just not available and it doesn't seem like it's going to be available in the foreseeable future. I tried to secure another facility and was not able to do so, so we've moved that down the line to fall two. I have secured a pool for fall two season. If Keith Tech is not available at that point and we'll have a conversation about how we can make that work. Indoor track was moved to the fall two season by the MIAA, but some TVL schools are going to try and run it this winter. But I'm not going to offer it this winter. I don't think it's right, mostly the sport modifications, it hasn't gone through that process. So the individual, the track committee hasn't met, passed their modifications through the sports medicine committee and through the Board of Directors. So I'm not, I'm not comfortable with offering that at this time. Also, we would have no middle school basketball this winter. That was across the board. There's one school that is considering doing kind of maybe an intramural type thing at their school. And again, the reason, same reason that we couldn't run middle school sports this fall without an athletic trainer on site and without me on site, it's really hard for for oversight of the of the program. And that is the, you know, very brief overview of the, you know, of the winter season. So happy to answer any questions. We can dive in deeper and again, I have a much more thorough presentation for Tuesday night that gets into a lot more of the details of this stuff. So.
Questions? Comments? Concerns?
I have I have one, Lori. Steven, one of the things that that is certainly concerning to me, I think to all probably to all of us is the reports of students congregating, you know, sort of off school time, right, gathering over the weekend or evenings and not adhering to social distancing requirements, not adhering to masks, not wearing masks. And therefore we have these pockets, right? I think a few of these incidents have been groups of kids that are affiliated through an athletic team. And I'm not sure whether there's been spread in that, that these gatherings have been. And I I believe that because sports are viewed as a privilege rather than a right, you have more ability to control behavior or to at least have consequences, going back to the point that we were talking about earlier. And I'm wondering whether there's been any discussion among either the A Ds or just whether you're thinking about it for our athletes as to whether or not there'd be a level of accountability to be able to not basically not be able to participate in sports if you're identified as an individual who is not maintaining social distancing requirements in some sort of out of school gathering or it could be in school gathering, but like that's more on us to have staff monitoring people. I'm just curious as to whether or not you or the other A Ds have talked about that idea.
We haven't necessarily talked about that idea. I think we sort of try and follow what the school is doing, right? So what I can say is when in the fall, when the student athletes are were with our coaches and with us, they were following all the policies and procedures. What they do outside of school, I we can't, we obviously can't control that. And can there be consequences? Can we, you know, suspend them from the team? Can we do this and that if they're not following that? I mean, potentially, but we have not had that conversation because I think we'd want to be totally in line with what what the school is doing. So that would be more of a conversation, I think, between our district rather than than the TVL.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm thinking about, Steven, is, you know, I know the MIA has rules around alcohol, right? I mean, if you're caught using alcohol during a sports season, you're suspended for half the season or something like that, right? And that's, I'm not sure that that has a comparable provision if a kid's drinking off on a weekend at a party. You know, what what's the consequence in school for that? And, you know, so I guess I see it as there's a possibility of something different. And, you know, look, all I'm looking for is is a way to say to kids, if if you're going to engage in sport, which is identified as a high risk sport, even with or without modifications, however you look at it, you have to be more careful. And, you know, to try to put some pressure on those teams, team members to be a little bit more careful. That's that's where I'm going. It's just to try to get as many people as possible be being careful. That's really what it comes down to.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I say the there's two parts to that, how, what kind of behaviors are happening outside of school. And what I can say is once the school year starts, if there are any alcohol, tobacco and any sort of chemical health violations, whether it's at a party or whatever, once it get, if it gets to us, that student still has to serve. There's an MIA rule that they have to serve a penalty for that.
Yeah, I like, that's a good point, Mark, because I think we're, if we allow something like this, then we are allowing a higher risk activity than we are allowing via our purview anyway, within our purview, other students to take, right? We're not, there's certainly different activities in school that are not happening this year for whatever reason. So they should be held to a high standard, right? Because we're allowing them to under the guise of our jurisdiction, take a, you know, higher risk activities. And so I, that was a good point that, you know, we should look to how we can, you know, hold them to that standard and and try to help influence that behavior.
And I think I think another point is that it really, that's that's protection to the school as a whole too, right? I mean, if we have more kids congregating and playing basketball as an example, and it is an elevated risk, it's not just a risk to the individual, it's a risk to the team, it's a risk to every every staff member in the building. And so we need them to.
That's a good point, Mark. I certainly think that I just sent a note to Steven and Kelly that that's a conversation we can have offline with regard to what what might be reasonable to consider as well. And I've and I said this to Steven and I'll say it publicly here. I stated that if we allowed this to go forward and and we had one of our our members of, say, the basketball team test positive, in my mind, every single person to close contact and that that program needs to be closed down for 14 days. And that's just, that's how I feel about it currently, is I'm trying to wrap my head around it. And and I was having the conversation with Mr. Kendall and he's like, well, and what about the other team, right? Are they close contacts because of just the nature of certain sports? And the answer is most likely they probably are. So there's an impact, not just within our community, but in the other community as well. So.
Yeah, we talked about that with the athletic directors and that's that's the, that's what we're operating under that same assumption. Yeah.
Yeah, I support what Mark and then Paul was saying about, you know, just increased vigilance and consequences for this period of time when we also have the increased transmission and increased risk and we've got the rest of our school population to worry about. So if we are going to do this, I think it's fair to ask for that kind of cooperation and give consequences when it's not adhered to. Also, Jim, not in terms of behavior, but just in terms of something that you said earlier about some of the club teams, possibly youth hockey or whatever, AAU not having the same stringent guidelines, but yet a lot of these kids are also playing on multiple teams. So, you know, it's almost as if they're bringing that that back to us. So is there any way to manage that?
I, yeah, go ahead, Steven.
It's interesting, i- in our conversations and some of the things that are starting to come out now are two things I've heard recently is one being if you are going to participate in athletics, some districts are saying you have to be a remote student. So you are not coming into school, you are just doing athletics, right? That's one of them. The other one is if you are participating in a high school sport, you cannot participate on any other sport currently. So those are the two ones that are kind of trickling out in certain parts of the state. Not saying I agree with 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 at least one of them. So.
Yeah, and that's good point, Steven. I was only going to qualify the second part of your comment there was that for me, yeah, I, we have the ability to say, listen, you're not playing on four travel teams in the the high school team. It's either, it it's all right, goes back to my youth basketball days when I was coaching where we demanded kids who were who were playing in a travel team that they had to play in rec as well. It was unfair. Well, it's actually the opposite right now. I would say if you're going to play on a travel team, you're not playing with the rest of the kids because you're exposing yourselves. That's a choice you have, you're making and but we're not going to, we're going to minimize the impact it could have within our own system. And that's how I feel about that.
And it's much more, that's a much more hockey issue right now for the winner than it is.
Basketball, it's not. They don't have AU in the in the winter. Yeah, it really would be just a club hockey.
Yeah.
Well, and this just circles back to like what I was saying in the beginning, because I don't think the the behavior is limited to athletes, right? And and that's why, so as far as what we were saying earlier with policy, this, I think we've kind of circled back and saying like, yes, actually, there is a way, either with handbook or that there's consequences for the students of being found. And maybe it's not at the parent level. But with students that if you're found and it can be that if you're found going to school when somebody in your home has been recently tested and is awaiting a result or you're congregating, that you could lose either sports or NHS or any of those other sort of privileges.
Yeah, and Steven, I I think, yeah, I think the first first thing you you said that districts are considering around the state is, you know, a bad choice in general. I'll just say that choose a lesser education because you want to play sports. That's that's awful. That's an awful choice to put before people. But but I would be curious as to on Tuesday, have even further discussion around that second one. And, you know, we are talking about higher risk activities that we have in the past and if there are things we can do to help minimize that, and that seems like a reasonable one, if you want to play on our on our team, then, you know, you're committing to our team and not expose, you know, increasing that already higher risk. Seems like a, you know, a reasonable thing to at least have a discussion on.
Certainly. One of the things that is, you know, just very time sensitive is the conversation on co-ops. So especially the the girls' ice hockey co-op, which is hosted by Medway. There's also Holliston students and I believe just one Millis student this year. But the reason that it's time sensitive is the further along, the longer it takes us to decide it's really affecting three other schools. Like there's a chance that if, like if we do it and Holliston does it, then there's going to be a team. If either Ashland or Holliston pulls out of the co-op, there's probably not going to be a team. And if Medway is allowing co-ops, so if they know ahead of time, they can potentially try and join maybe another co-op, you know, where we're kind of holding up. You know, and I don't know if we're ready to figure that out today, but just, you know, I'm getting hammered on that side because they they really need to have an answer to figure out what what they can do and what they're planning for.
Steven, my thought on that is we haven't haven't talked enough about that sports specific, those specific sports and arrangements for me to be comfortable making a decision on. I guess they anticipate doing that on Tuesday. But, you know, if the many members are prepared, you're prepared to make a recommendation. And I talked to us a little bit about sort of what the precautions are that are taken that are different with the co-op, what the sports specific modifications are and why we think it's safe to do that. That's the kind of information I guess I would want before being comfortable going along with it. And I also want to hear what Audrey and Ed have or what the public health officials at the state level have for information to say, you know, what we're doing with these hockey teams avoids the problems that caused the, we had some impact on here a couple of months ago, the club team, right? So, you know, I don't know, I don't know if you're looking for us to make that decision today, but I certainly would want more information on sports specific modifications on our co-ops for you to make an vote.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it's it's going to be a longer conversation. I just wanted to put it out there and, you know.
Steven, are we considering at all letting the girls play with the boys team?
So that that's an interesting conversation because if we are not offering girls' ice hockey, then yes.
Title nine, right?
Then yes, the girls could potentially play on the boys' ice hockey team here. We don't, we don't have enough girls to run our own team, which is why we're
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I was the only girl on the team when I was at AHS. And so, I mean, I think this one hits a little close to home to me because I know what a struggle it is for girls. this one hits a little close to home to me because I know what a struggle it is for girls in towns like where you're not an established team and how to play. But I think also education and safety always has trumped sport for me. So if we can figure out another way, and if that's them playing with the boys, I think that might be the way to go rather than doing the co-op. Do, Stephen, on the girls' hockey, what are the grades of our students?
We have, I mean, I think we have one, at least one from each grade.
So we have a senior who this could be potentially impacted, oh, four?
Yep. And not, yeah, yeah.
Do we know is that a, is that an athlete that's potentially getting recruited too?
Yeah, but that, that's not going to play into this decision-making. I think if, if an athlete's going to get recruited, they're going to get recruited regardless if they're playing here or not.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so Stephen, I'll, I'll just give you the, the thoughts I, I, when I spoke to Jim and maybe we can have a further conversation on Tuesday. I think that's probably the best form for us to really have a more robust conversation where probably we'll get more attendance from the, from the public and, and things like that. But as it relates to the co-ops, my, I, I, you know, I know hockey is labeled as a high risk, but to me it doesn't strike me, it strikes me as a different animal, a little less risk than say basketball, given the movement and, and, and things like that. But as it relates to the co-op, I'd be interested to hear, to me, one of the differences relative to the other sports we've been talking about typically for the co-op ones is oversight, right? If we have, you know, a, a, any, any of our fall sports, okay, they happened under your, your watchful eye or the coach's watchful eye, Ashland coach, Ashland A D, Ashland principal, things like that, people that we have conversations with control, some moderate control over. With a co-op, we send, you know, for example, the girls' hockey, we send six young ladies somewhere else. And I'd be interested to understand that oversight, because there is certainly different stances and rigor, you know, in, in different districts. And I'm not saying that any one of the T V L is lacking or not, but it's just there, there is that, that difference that we can say, Stephen, how did this go? What's going on? What happened here? When we offer this up in a co-op situation, obviously that paradigm changes. And so whether you have an answer for that today or on Tuesday, that was for, at least relative to co-op, that was one of my challenges in just understanding how that works.
Sure. I mean, wh- what I can say now is that it's really, well, the first thing is in the fall, we, in terms of oversight, we were able to, myself and our athletic trainer, Amy Mendoza, were able to be at every practice and every game. Because everything was here at the high school. The winter is different because ice hockey, they'll be, you know, over at Loring Arena while we're here with a basketball practice. But in terms of the girls' co-op, it, it, all the schools are following the same guidelines because it's the hockey modification guideline. So it comes down to a coach's ability to monitor that. And I can say I, I have the utmost confidence in, in our coaches and that coach who I know well from that, from that team, that everything would be followed to those modifications.
I think we should also explore whether these girls, the gymnast as well as the, the six hockey girls. I mean, if we're seriously considering possibly limiting participation in out, on outside teams, if you want to play for Ashland or a co-op, and that's a deal breaker for these kids. Usually often when you're a gymnast, you're also competing for your gym. And there's a couple of different girls' leagues around, and I don't personally know whether these girls are involved in, in that. But if we're seriously considering that limitation, and that's a deal breaker for these kids then playing for the co-op, then, you know, that might be something that you want to try to figure out so that you can let the people that you're talking to, Stephen, the other coaches who need this information quickly, know about that we're considering that possible limitation.
And to that point, Lori, actually, I just sent that message to Stephen and Kelly. Like, I, I'm curious as to if we don't allow co-op, how many of these athletes will now go and participate on travel teams and or club teams, which actually poses more of a risk than being able to control.
The other way as well.
Right, right? So being able to control it within house of the T V L where we, I have faith in the superintendents of the T V L and the principals and the A Ds where they will, and the coaching staff, because they, they want these sports to continue. They want to play them. So they will, and, and I, I speak, I know, you know, confidently in having this conversation with superintendents that they've made it clear that we need to follow strictly these protocols in order to have athletics continue. So, but to that point, our kids could easily be outside of our, our purview and do what they want and have zero limitations.
That's, that's a good point, Jim.
They, they've been doing it all fall. They've been playing all fall.
That's right.
Yeah.
And it goes to the, further back to Mark's point, Paul's point, everybody's point about having a limitation on you can only participate for, and actually the M I A has a rule as well that, that you can only participate within your team. The, you know, the bona fide rule.
Can't miss anything. Yeah.
Right. So you can't miss anything. You can't.
Right. And they, what they say is your team has to be the priority.
Correct. But we can, we can go above that. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I share all those concerns that everyone's been bringing up, you know. I'm wondering more about basketball and being inside and, but.
You have such a big.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. I'm just wondering, was there any, you know, how we had in the fall, we had all the games on the weekend. Was, is there any, was there a health benefit to that? And so I'm just wondering about that, changing that from being on the weekend. And now things are going back to weekdays.
Well, I, was there a health benefit? I mean, you know, it, it, it worked. It fit. We were outside. You know, it made the, the whole week flow. We all had control of our facilities. Like ice hockey, we don't have control of any facilities, right? Like whatever ice time we can get, we can get.
Oh, right.
I also wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable sending a high school hockey team having back to back games, right? So I'd want them to be Wednesday and Saturday, which is what they typically are. And that's where the rinks are. We have rink time on Saturdays and Saturdays. So that was the main thing. Basketball, can you do it? Sure. But it, you know, to have a, a couple of days in between.
Yeah.
Can I just, I want to make a point with regard to hockey too. I think, I think after the governors of, actually all the New England states shut, shut our rinks down. I think that was a warning message, right? It was a shot across the bow to, to these rinks and, and the organizations running these programs to say, listen, we will close you down if you're not adhering to the policies of, of the state and, and our expectations. And since then, since they've reopened, I don't think I've read or seen as much of that occurring. And, but I do think it was a warning shot to those organizations and, and those rinks in particular are saying, okay, we've got to ensure that our policies and our practices with regard to COVID are, are being followed and adhered to and of the strongest, you know, capacity that we can manage within our organization. So.
So that was a good. They are. Yeah, they are. I actually, myself and Matt Baker, who's the athletic director at Holliston, they also use Loring Arena. So earlier this week, we went over and met at the arena and talked to the manager and walked through the facility to see what it would look like and is it feasible with the modifications that they put in at Loring Arena? Because there's, there's some ice rinks where the modifications that they put in facility, but you just can't do it. So, you know, and he talked a lot about that as well. And, and Jim, you're, you're exactly right. That was a warning shot. And if it, if something happens again, I would expect the that closure to maybe last a little bit longer.
I, I think it would be beneficial and, and I'm throwing something more on someone else's plate here, but but, you know, the only undefeated hockey coach here, Coach Berman, would it, would it be, would it be appropriate for you to go over with Stephen Marks, you know, and, and another A D to, to really look at what they're doing? If, if we want feedback from our public health people, does it make sense for you and to go over and see what it looks like and how they're, you know, how they're making modifications?
Yeah, absolutely. And maybe let me know the first time they're there and we'll maybe just do a little surprise walk in, make sure everything's being followed properly.
Yeah.
And yes, I am undefeated.
I know you are. Inside joke, Ed covered for a game a couple of years back.
I, I drove the bus and the coach didn't show up. He was stuck. And I decided to coach and the kids called me up. They said, you don't even understand the rules, do you?
This is great.
Oh, we won.
Yeah.
So, so Stephen, just my other thoughts that I shared with Jim, you know, I, I, I do think that, you know, and, and I'm glad Kathy brought it up. You know, I'll just say that the one that, that challenges me the most is basketball, right? It's by nature very different than every single other sport, including hockey that we've talked about, right? The, the very nature of it is for the duration you're on that court, you should be pretty darned close to somebody else. And that's the whole point, you know, you're, you're, you're trying to. And, and to the close contact thing, you know, I, I said, Jim, I'm like, I don't, I don't think our, our students are the close contacts, right? Unless we're running interesting drills during, probably inappropriate drills during practice. Really the other team has close contacts, right? Because, you know, when we're playing offense, we have a, you know, somebody, somebody on the other team trying to just stick to us and vice versa. And so I really struggle. And so on Tuesday, that, that'll be the challenge for me is understanding how we do that. And not necessarily just whether I think we can do that and be safe, but also how do we be consistent with everything else we as a district have decided to do? If we're saying that's okay, that activity's okay, then we, I think we have to revisit what we think is okay for other activities, because that is certainly the closest contact, closest with longest duration contact we've had. And Jim and I joked, we should just have wrestling then. Right? Because wrestling by nature could not be a close contact. You know, the period, your periods aren't that long, right? So, so if you think about it from that perspective and you gauge against something as preposterous as saying, let's just have wrestling right now and think that that's okay, then, then that's where I struggle with trying to figure out how we both do it safely and then how we, how do we apply what we were talking about with basketball equitably across all the activities across the district.
Yeah, I, I, I agree completely. And actually Kelly and I talked last week about it and, and I don't know what happens in some of the other activities that we do. I think the one of the differences is that the, we have a, there's a process that the M I A went through to get to these modifications to say that it's potentially safer or that it is safe for to districts to decide whether or not they want to do. So the sport committees came up with modifications. And to be honest, both the basketball and ice hockey modifications that were presented to the sports medicine committee first were denied. And then they had to go back the next day, they had to make adjustments and then they were approved. So you know, there was a process that was followed through for for athletics, for the, for those activities. It's not just us. That's why I didn't want to do indoor track because that process was not. We didn't do it yet. Yeah.
Yeah. So th- 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 those are, those are the things that I, I had, I just wanted to share. So we would be prepared to have answers or more, more conversation on Tuesday.
Sure.
Thank you, Stephen, for all of this work that you're putting in. I know, you know, your job is nothing like you imagined it would be, just like the rest of you. But I know athletics has particularly been challenging to try to figure out how to do it safely, since we know what a lifeline it is for a lot of these kids, you know, physically and mentally. And Kelly, we heard it at site council, you know, that was one of the most prevalent comments from parents and kids about how, you know, even if we're playing like frisbee or whatever it is, just like give us a game to play with our friends outdoors, indoors, anywhere. We appreciate how, I appreciate how important it is to, to the physical and mental health of everybody. And it's just challenging to try to figure out how it fits into this whole bigger context of what's going on with this pandemic. But thank you for doing everything that you're doing to try to make it happen. And I guess we'll just continue having these conversations next week and probably moving forward because we're in this for a while. And if, if there are no other questions, we can finish the discussion on Tuesday. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? Before we adjourn? Do we have a motion?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, Aaron?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
All right. Have a good day, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Stephen.